So bear with me. So what we will do, first things first is, I guess we'll call a meeting to order, I should say that. We will discuss this HSA discussion so that we can get it off the table. These gentlemen know which way they need to go. That way they don't have to sit through a whole meeting to get all this resolved. I got an email here from a gentleman named Bill Sylvester. And I will read you exactly what he sent to me. To reiterate, applicable laws apply. An individual on Medicare cannot contribute to an HSA or have an employer contribute to an HSA within six months of an individual enrolling in Medicare. HSA funds cannot be used to pay insurance premiums. An employer can, if we decide, if they choose to increase the wages of an individual to cover the cost of a benefit, they're no longer eligible for it. The additional wage cannot be pre-taxed. Therefore, it will be taxed as income. An employer can do this on an individual basis as long as it's not tied to benefits. If it is tied to benefits, it must be provided to all individuals who qualify. It's not to be considered discriminatory. And last but not least, as an aside for county governments, and you guys will appreciate this, while council may approve funding for such a program, it is the commissioners to decide whether or not to implement the policy. And that is the email I have right here concerning the HSA. Now, is there any discussions on the board?
So they're saying, what if you don't take Medicare?
If you don't take Medicare, this, the HSA is a benefit to our high deductible medical insurance. And if you decide not to take Medicare, you stay on insurance. You do not have to pay a penalty until you're sixty-nine and six months. So if you decide not to take Medicare and stay on the health insurance, you can get the HSA. Nothing has changed because you're still on the county insurance.
I wonder, is that part A or just part B that you get on? Is it a separate deal?
Medicare period as far as I, no.
The way I understood it, as soon as you turn sixty-five, they automatically put you on part A, but you can refuse part B. So.
You're talking, you're not in my wheelhouse, I don't know when. I just know that it's all one Medicare A and B, one's hospital, one's the doctors.
They don't charge you for A. They don't take A out of your check.
That's correct.
But B, they do.
But again, it's Medicare. So I, I didn't get into split strokes. And so.
I tried to call the IRS all day yesterday and all used to record you over and over and over.
The IRS, I went to, says it is a basic IRS regulation. That if you do Medicare, you cannot collect an HSA. Now, if you have an HSA, say in April, in the county, or in this case, the county has paid four months in your HSA. That's yours. They're not going to take that away from you. But after that, you cannot contribute to it. But what is in there is yours.
Right, yeah.
To use. You're not going to lose it because you decided to do it.
And we'll just declare, not what you just said. So that's something about up until the time you're sixty-five, there are certain days, months before they start quitting doing it? Or that's just when you turn sixty-five?
For Medicare?
When you go on Medicare?
Yeah, it's the month you turn sixty-five.
But you legally get it until that month, right?
The HSA benefit?
Yeah.
It says here, six months. Go there again.
That's why.
Yeah, we don't have to sign in.
Confused on this.
Have an employer contribute to an HSA within six months of enrolling in Medicare. Like I said, and you know as well as I do, some of this is confusing as all get out. And some lines contradict each other. So, again, I'm asking for guidance. Anybody else have any guidance?
Sounds like, for me, what he's saying, we don't dare pay anything that they've been requesting, so.
And the only issue I have was if we decide to offer these gentlemen, in this instance, we contradicted ourselves because we didn't allow the prosecutor's office to pay a benefit. We can't change the salary ordinance already because it's been.
Adopted and approved.
Adopted and approved, so we can't change it for this year. So even if it was decided, there's nothing we can do this year.
To me, that was like it's age discrimination. That seems like age discrimination to me. Somebody turns sixty-five and you're taking pay away from them, basically. You're taking.
I want to tell all money from.
What I understand.
That's, like I said, that's, I read it verbatim, what was sent to me. So as, as I read this, if the gentleman has gone on to Medicare at age sixty-five, and I say, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, whoever did, in this case, you guys.
They're not eligible.
You're not eligible. You're going to lose the HSA benefit.
Yeah, we knew that. That was never explained.
Well, and I can't, again, I'll, I'll let the board say. I'm going to go.
So if there's a way where you can opt out of part A also, you wouldn't be on Medicare at all? Then they're going to keep paying you until sixty-nine or something, you said?
Again, if, if you can opt out of Medicare, then it's, according to what I've read, it's sixty-nine and a half because it's, you have to sign up essentially before your seventieth birthday.
You have to pay a penalty. That's right.
You have to sign up for Medicare.
Or you get a penalty.
You can, you can opt out, you can opt out until sixty-nine and a half. But if you opt out, you will pay a penalty at sixty-nine and a half for not taking Medicare at sixty-five.
For every month you haven't taken.
Yes, yes.
If you're still on credible insurance, I've been through this for the last month.
Once, Medicare is always primary. It doesn't matter whose insurance you carry besides it. Medicare is your primary insurance.
I mean, even if, even if you don't take it at sixty-five?
If you don't take it at sixty-five, you can stay on the county's insurance or whatever insurance policy you have. But if you choose not to take it at sixty-five and wait till sixty-nine and a half, that's fine. But be aware that sixty-nine and a half, you will pay a penalty when you sign up for Medicare.
They told me that as long as you've got credible insurance, wherever you're somewhere that you do not get penalized once. The only way you're going to get penalized, what they told me, I'm just.
I know.
They said, I called two, I was up at the office the other day. It's happened, and I went on the phone with different ones. And they said, as long as you're still on credible insurance, until you, so you lose your job and lose your insurance, then you can sign up anytime without a penalty, is what, the way I understood it. And I've asked, this was two phone calls and being up at the office, it's happened. I mean, I'm not arguing with Kathy, I'm just saying.
No, I'm not arguing.
I realize everyone gives you a different answer.
You get a different answer every time you talk to them. So it depends on who you talk to or what day of the week it is.
I say, I tried to call, I was on the phone for an hour or two yesterday. Was trying to call the IRS, I guess.
You're not going to get anybody on the IRS.
Number two, number three, number three for this blah, 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 it's a bunch of bullshit. I mean, our government is. Hey, if somebody calls up there, somebody's going to answer the phone. You don't get a, less of recording.
That's true.
You can't even get, get a person, there's no way, even if you sit, you know, wait for an hour to talk to a person, you can't even get that far with them. There's no person to talk to.
What me and Jeff found on the website, on their, on their website is, you know, basically what Kathy's saying. For, if you decline it at sixty-five, which you can, once you get to the age of where mandatory signup, you don't have a choice in it, you're penalized a percentage from the day, you know, you was able to sign up at sixty-five until that sixty-seven.
Yep, that's right.
So they take that money away from your monthly check.
I understand what you're saying, I run it hard. But the way they told me, as long as you stay on insurance, even at sixty-five, you don't get penalized, but like I said, that's just.
They will penalize, they will penalize you.
Let's, let's, we're, we're. Because we can argue Medicare, the IRS, that we're all blue in the face. Our, our information here is on the HSA.
Penalty doesn't have any variance on this.
No. So, any other guidance from anybody?
Well, not guidance, I have zero guidance. I do have comment.
Hey, that's surprising.
Well, I know, I know. So, so I will comment to, so Steve talked about age discrimination. The only thing that I'm concerned about is where, where would this, how far-reaching would this discrimination be? If we granted it, do you guys deserve it? No doubt about it. If we granted it, so then, why wouldn't somebody that is, an employee that's already on insurance, but they haven't insured their children because they can't afford to, why wouldn't they come to us and say, well, why are we any different? You've discriminated against us? Or an employee that hasn't covered their spouse? Why wouldn't they, I mean, I just am afraid this will, the domino effect will be far-reaching. That's my only concern. And it's really tough sitting up here because it's hard to be objective because we know you guys. We see you. I, I totally understand where you're coming from. If I were sitting out there, I totally understand where you're coming from. So it's hard to be up here and be objective and think about what is the best decision for the good of the all instead of just the few. There. So I'm, I'm, I would have trouble, even though you deserve it, I would have trouble approving it. Those are my thoughts.
I got a question, just thinking out loud, I guess. What about our congressmen and senators? Do they, are they healthcare equipped when they leave the office?
They get it for life.
So why do they get it for life and we don't? It'd be interesting to know the answer to that.
Yeah.
Because they have post-employment benefits.
What about illegal evidence?
And we don't have that.
We're getting offed up.
The end, merit.
Okay.
I don't know that I have an opinion, honestly. In this situation, like Bill said, I don't, I don't know. I totally understand where they're coming from, I just, I don't know.
Mr. Davis? I think our hands are tied. I just, we have to follow the law. We can't, there's nothing we can do, rather we walk around. Laura?
All right, so we have to do what the law says. I think that's pretty clear, we don't dare try to pay it as a benefit or anything else because it says we can't do that.
So I guess where we stand is, number one, it says here is the commissioners say we're not implementing the policy.
Right.
We're defunding. But if we make a decision here tonight not to fund it.
It won't go to the commissioners.
Then the point is moved. So unless there's any other comments, I'll let someone else, who kind of ordered it. But if not, Phil, help me out, this is the first time I've done that.
Okay, so, so I'll make a motion regretfully to decline your request.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes, sir.
You said, if we wanted to, we could give it to them a different way. It just wouldn't be pre-taxed. We could just give them about twenty-five hundred dollars a year? But it wouldn't be pre-taxed like it is now?
If we do that, then we open the gates.
Yeah, I understand.
To everybody, unfortunately. And we would have a line up the auditor's office all the way down.
You're going to have every employee that doesn't choose to take insurance wanting their extra pay too.
You bet.
Maybe a stipulation, I think at sixty-five, we're only, I don't.
And that takes discrimination anyway.
Phil, continue.
So, that's all right, so I'll make, I'll make a motion regretfully to decline the request of the paying, it would be a benefit, HSA to employees once they turn sixty-five. That's my motion.
What if they do not take Medicare?
You're in the weeds.
Are they going to be on it? They're just going to, if they do not take Medicare at all?
We should make the motion that says once a person selects Medicare.
Then they're not.
Instead of their age.
There you go.
There you go.
There.
You know, if a person opts into Medicare when they're old enough to say that the HSA contributions.
Okay, there. Pardon me? We have no way of knowing who selected Medicare.
Looking on county insurance. Because that's a benefit for county insurance.
But we would have to have that reported. He's asking for it because he has different purpose. But had he taken Medicare and stayed on the county's insurance as a supplemental, we would have no idea that he accepted Medicare. That's not, generally, we don't know that. Practice has been, since prior to even maybe the law, there's most people turn sixty-five, they don't receive the HSA anymore. So if you want to offer HSA even if they don't accept Medicare, you would probably need to do a resolution to declare that.
So in this instance, a motion would be sixty-five.
So one thing, once a person reaches sixty, the age of, once his employee reaches sixty-five years of age, they no longer receive HSA benefits. Yes? Yes, 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 that's my motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Lori, second it, all in favor? All opposed? Five to two. It passes, five to two. And we will proceed from here. Thank you for bringing it up, gentlemen.
Thank you all for having me.
Thank you for your time. We appreciate what you guys do, even though at times you don't think we do. So let's move on, if we could, please. Oh, we'll do department updates. Travis, you're sitting in the front row.
So we're supposed to start with the back row?
Yeah, new year, right? So I emailed out the reports, the monthly reports, and then the December reports, and then the end of the year reports, along with the two-year comparison stats. Any questions over any of those? Couple highlights on the two-year comparison stats. Criminal arrests excluding warrants were up one hundred and thirty-nine percent last year. I believe that's a direct result from the increase in traffic stops. Big old crashes were also up one hundred and fifty percent, which, we talked about that throughout the year, and I've got the numbers, but we had those. But we went from two in two thousand and twenty-two to five in two thousand and twenty-three. So, I've been miles patrolled just a little bit, so. Any questions over any of those? Commissary report as well, is there any questions on those? Around the commissary report in July to December?
So if you would speak to, and thank you for these reports.
Yes.
By the way, most interesting. If you would speak to, in the commissary report, activities to maintain order and discipline, prevent criminal activity, public relations, five thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
So those are specific to basically any of the PR stuff that, that we do as a department, any of the stuff that we hand out. I know specifically with this, it was popcorn machine rental for the fairgrounds, where you can get popcorn, many of the PR stuff, the balls, the yardsticks, any of the publications. Food Fest, any of the parades or anything that we were at, Fulton Fundings, basically anything that we do PR-related is, is what that fund is utilized for.
Thank you, I just didn't know what that was, but that's very worthwhile.
Yep.
So, so the public and especially youth get to know you guys and, and know that you guys aren't the bad guys.
And that's one thing that we really tried to push out, or I tried to really push out, is we want to be more visible and all the things, whether it's Fourth of July or Fulton Fundings. We need, maybe an opportunity to be out and be interacting with the public. I encourage that, so. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the commissary?
No, I have none.
Okay. With commissary, the statute that governs that says that we can use commissary for nine different reasons. Eight of those are very, very specific. But the ninth one says, any other purpose to benefit the sheriff's department that is mutually agreed upon the county fiscal body, which is you guys. So that brings me to office furniture for court security. They've recently left their remodel in court security. The Title IV D office is now the court security office, and they need furniture to put in there, so. We've gotten a quote, thirty-eight hundred dollars for the desks, two desks and four chairs. Two chairs put out with the scanner, with the baggage scanner and another detector, and then two, two chairs back in with the court security offices. So I'm requesting your guys' approval to be mutually agreed upon, that we can use commissary funds to fund the office furniture for thirty-six eighty twenty-three for court security.
And you have those funds, obviously.
Yep, yep.
Okay, so, so you're, you're a blessing.
I, yeah, I don't know if it needs to be a motion and approval, but it needs to get in a minute somewhere, that way if it's audited. And I think we could probably, I was talking to Ron about this earlier, we could probably justify it without this because court security does handle inmates when they're over there, and so it is a benefit to the inmates. But just to clean it up, to make sure that there's no issues at all, if we get your approval along with, with me mutually agree upon, then it's, it's a no-brainer for state border counts, so.
And then we also talked, Travis is going to get something to make things easier to find two years down the road if the state border council comes in and says, hey, you did this without looking through every minute. So we do, and he's going to come up with an ordinance that, to come up with to make it easier so that we can.
The mutually agreed upon stuff.
Mutually agreed upon is a little clearer.
So other counties, that's what I was talking to Ron about ahead of time, other counties basically put it out on an ordinance that says, this is what we agree upon the commissary can be used for. And then that way, if it is ever audited, we don't have to go back and find this exact meeting at this exact time, at this exact place, that says that, hey, yeah, there was a motion, it was approved. We can refer back to an ordinance that was approved that says, hey, look, this is why we did it this way, because this ordinance says we can. So, a lot of other counties have done that. I've got a couple examples, talked to Ron about it, he's interested in us, and we'll get something put together and presented to you.
So this ordinance would then cover the, the umbrella of things that could be paid for on a commissary.
Exactly, outside of those eight, those eight statutes.
Right, that's a good idea.
And other counties have done it, it just cleans it up for having to go back to these meetings to look for that specific ordinance, so. Because who knows, you know, two years from now, I'm not going to know what meeting we talked about office furniture for court security, so.
Right, true, good thinking. So having said that, you, I'll make a motion that we allow Travis to use funds out of commissary by furniture for.
Court security.
Court security. I'll make that motion.
Got it.
Steve, second it. Did you help? Wait, you don't want me to make motions?
I don't care, I hadn't asked for a motion yet.
I'm sorry.
That's quite all right, you've got practice.
This guy is supposed to be, so I have to interject something. So excuse me, everybody. I told John to give me the dad look when I was overstepping, and he's not been knowing it. So we'll blame him, sorry.
That's all right, that's fine. You're doing a fine job.
Is he trying to say your old job or what? She's telling me.
All right, push it, if you'd like, I'll say, Steve, to approve Travis purchasing furniture for court security, all in favor? Seven to zero?
Thank you, approved, we'll get that order.
And then ten to minutes.
It's in ten to minutes, now whoever's going to have to go find that, it's on them.
That's right.
Ten to minutes, so. I can't remember if I updated you guys since Larry Jolly retired, but Matt Utter promoted to chief deputy, and then Derek Altman was promoted to detective. We took possession of the two Tahoe's that we ordered, the second, the last two of the three from last year, the first week in January. So those are on the road and operational. We invoiced for a little over sixty-two thousand dollars in December for out-of-county inmates. Of those, I'm looking for the breakdown here. Twenty-five thousand, almost twenty-six thousand was for out-of-county inmates, Waukesha County, Howard County, I think we had one from Mayan County. Twenty-four thousand was federal inmates, and then twelve thousand was for department corrections. So in that fund, the bond reduction fund, I looked yesterday morning, and there's a little over five hundred thousand in there since, since the ordinance was adopted, I think in two thousand and twenty-one, so. February twenty-sixth, nine to eleven, we've got a Korean first responder training, Korean culture first responder training at the sheriff's office. They're expecting an influx of Korean population because of EV plants in Kokomo and in New Park Lounge. So it's basically a first responder training for dispatch, fire, EMS, and law enforcement, just kind of the cultural differences between America versus Korean. So that's at nine to eleven, anybody's welcome to attend, we're going to put some stuff out. They're supposed to be sending me a flyer, and I'm going to get that to Gail, she's going to push it out to all her people, so.
Thank you.
But they're going to be stopped Koreans.
Pardon me?
Steve? They, they who is going to get you a?
Ah, Mike, maybe you can, I'm not real sure who she's with, it's.
She's a, she's with a consulting firm that the regional group has hired. She is Korean. I would suggest, one of the things that I have been told frankly since I've attended one of these sessions already, please do not refer to them as South Koreans, they do not recognize that term, and that's offensive to them. They, they see Korea as one country. They just have got some problems just the way that they view it. This young lady is, like I said, she's Korean. She grew up mostly over there, came to America, goes back, back and forth, whatnot. So she's going to be the basic trainer on what goes on. The, let's see, there's one other thing about that too that escapes me at the moment. But basically, what's, what's going to happen here is we're going to have sixty Koreans come in to Kokomo at a time. They rotate out every six months so they can go back home. And then you'll get sixty new ones, and that doesn't mean another training session because you guys already have been trained on all of that. What happens at that point is they're being trained over there in our rules. And you've heard me say before, like, if Travis was to stop one of them for speeding or something, they're used to getting out of the car and coming back to him, so he's protected. That's not quite the way it works with us. And so they're learning our processes as we're learning, going to be learning there. we're learning, going to be learning theirs. So this isn't a situation where they come over here and our laws go by the byway, it is they're, everybody's teaching everybody so that when Travis stops somebody and that guy gets out of the car, he knows, okay, he's just reacting as he would normally react, and I'm not pulling the gun, I'm just going to get out, get back in the car, and I'm going to deal with this, you know, so that's the type of training that we're talking about, it's all cultural stuff. Nobody's asking, because I've run across this already, nobody's saying we have to live by their rules, we're just educating them to what our rules are, and we're learning what their rules are, so that when they make that mistake, we don't have a tragedy, that's really what this is all about.
I think it's a great idea, I mean, it's just more knowledge and power, so at least...
Thank you, I was going to ask the purpose, I didn't want to sound insensitive, but thank you.
No, it really is, it's just they're, they're very, very, the more I, the more I deal with this, the more I learn they're extremely sensitive people, and you only get one shot with them. For instance, if they came in to Fulton and they were really rudely treated at a restaurant or something, they communicate amongst themselves, and it's like, you don't want to go to Rochester, you don't want to go to Fulton County, because by golly, they just don't like us, you know, that type of thing. So it's, it's a whole different culture. One thing I would recommend, if you have not gone on and Googled what the Korean language looks, alphabet looks like, do it. It's completely different, there's no ABC there.
Thank you. So, anyway, she had reached out to me early on, and Michael's included in on it, basically, hey, can we do a setup of pushers while we're training, so that is scheduled for February twenty-sixth, or nine to eleven, out of sheriff's office, so we will get information pushed out to all the fire, EMS, and dispatch and law enforcement, so. Other than that, that's all I have to do on it. Yes, sir.
Take a step back, do we know when Wauwahatch County will get jailed or...
Hopefully never, because we're making some pretty...
I understand.
They were supposed to, when I talked to the sheriff there at the fall conference, they were supposed to be opened up the first of the year, but I do know that they had tarts all over the inside of the building last month, because...
I went by there last week, and there was the first car sitting there, so.
Yeah, so I know they had major conditions, so I don't know, yeah, they're paying us nice to house our neighbors, so.
That's great.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions, Travis? Anyone else out there? Thank you, Travis.
Thank you.
Let's go down the road.
You forgot Michael Wann. Oh, there.
We'll pick on him later.
I just have a couple of things, you noticed the travel advisory, we're still yellow, just depending on this weekend, we're either white or we're orange, who knows? Thought about leaving it on until summer, or summertime, so, cover all bases, but, anyway, that's what we're doing, so far, obviously no road closures, whatever, I will tell you the two EMA trucks, the newest ones, didn't like this type of weather and wouldn't start, so, because a good old trusty Durango from two thousand fired right up, so I really hate to get rid of that. So any questions on the weather or anything like that, I'll let you know about the next step. On the twenty-third, I am meeting to discuss plans for the homeless in regards to a warming and cooling plan that I need to put in the comprehensive plan for the county. With this being said, we're not responsible for the homeless, but these tools and so forth will be in the comprehensive plan, and we will work with the faith-based out of Cosiasko County, they have a great plan that we're going to try to follow, I've been following the St. Joe County's plan as well, but the whole point of it is, I can help in create a resource list, but we cannot maintain those shelters. We have other issues, we're not trained in that mental capacity, and we don't have time to babysit, because those places do have to be monitored. So with that being said, we open warming and cooling shelters at the fire stations and the volunteer, and obviously they're volunteer, so they're in a time of emergency or an outage and so forth, and we do have mutual agreement, mutual agreements like with the schools, and Red Cross does as well, to open those larger domains for this reason, so. Anyway, so there's no money transactions with this, and every year I make sure there's plenty of blankets and pillows out of the EMA building for these individuals that may be homeless or needing a place to, wherever they go, so, it isn't always going to be one.
So do they know where to go?
Currently, there has been some generous donations to set them up, the homeless, for a short period of time, I don't want to, not being politically correct in any kind of speaking here, but like, there's things out there, United Way, I'm not for sure how much money they have, but these faith-based groups and all these groups that help these individuals from, you know, low income to whatever, they really all need to collaborate, and that's what this effort is going to be, like a collaboration, instead of everybody doing their own thing, and those resources being...
So this is in the working phase right now?
It is in the working phase, I have been working with this for a while, it's like herding cats, because the county cannot be responsible for this, we cannot keep putting money up for people's choices, is a nice way to put it, I guess, so, with that being said, we'll write a plan, the commissioners adopt that, and we'll bring in, you know, your towns and so forth to give approval as well, so everybody's on the same page in each location.
Thank you.
That's about all I have, will she have anything else, or have any questions for me, or...
Anybody have anything for Gail?
No.
Anyone out there? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Michael, she made me feel bad, you're next.
Uh-huh.
Thanks, Gail.
I even forgot Jerry over here in the corner.
She's, she's there, she's...
Time out.
Just a few things, you have the contract, annual contract for our services in front of you, I'm just presenting it for you tonight to sign or do whatever you want to deal with, it does represent the increase that I asked for to one hundred and thirty thousand dollars. The city gave us a hundred and ten, so we have two hundred and forty thousand dollars to work with. The increase really is going to go toward a new website that we need, and you've got that project going, bringing backup, we've got Charlie Sparks, got the most amazing desk for him that was loaned to us, it fills his entire office space, Charlie's in and out working already, so we, our first task is, we're going to start working with the city to update a required economic development plan that the state requires for us to deal with, so that'll be our first task. The second task is, and I'm really happy to let this be known, we started out with about a hundred acres on the park south of town, and found out last night that they're continuing to negotiate on buying more property, we might have about three hundred acres under our control in the next few weeks, which is the right size that we want. The ready program, we met with the state on the eleventh all day long, presented our various programs, I feel really comfortable saying that we're going to get both projects. Janet Vance has a childcare learning center program that she's got set up, and the state was very impressed with it to the point that in an after, a value, after meeting evaluation meeting that we had, it got said that we need to look at this maybe as a state model.
Oh wow.
Yeah, wow, it was really nice to hear that, so we're, I'm working with him to see what, I don't expect anything this session, or anything, because they're already locked in, but I could see this in an interim study where we take it out and move forward. I think the industrial park will get funded as well, so I think we have two good programs, solid programs that we can move into the future. We're taking the programs that did not get what they call above the line, do not get considered, and I'm going to work with various businesses and companies and the hospital and whatnot, and move forward on those, so we can go into Ready Three, which is, I really believe will happen, because about a week ago, two weeks ago maybe, Eli Lilly Foundation announced that they are going to put two hundred and fifty million dollars into the Ready Program. The official announcement comes in April, so that doesn't mean we have seven hundred million coming at us, we still have just the, we'll just get the seventy-five million for the county is what we'll get, you know, but that's continuation of the program, so we're going to continue with the programs that didn't get funded and push them forward, and there's other programs, I was talking with Gail last night about another one that we're going to put in the pipeline. What the state, what the state wants out of us is, they want to see us moving forward on our own, and then when we push something, when we, when they throw a program like Ready at us, we can say, we've already gone this far, we need your help to get us the rest of the way. They want to know what the county and the cities want to do in the next five, ten, fifteen years, and we'll be putting together a program already with the city and the county making those plans, seeing where we want to go, we, you know, it's going to be one of those things where, where do you want to be when you want to grow up, or when you grow up, you know, type of thing, so, that's pretty much what's going on. There was one good thing that you guys will appreciate, I had a meeting Monday, and it was about Blackadder, we talked with Brian Lewis and Trent, they wanted to know exactly where we stood on Blackadder, how much money the city and the county had to put out there in the future, we got all that figured out, whatnot. I can say truthfully that I can see Blackadder up and running in the end of, at the middle of the summer, and we can probably take that off the agenda from now on for a while, and so that's, that's a positive, as far as I'm concerned, so, that's where we stand. I'm going to ask you if you would vote on the contract tonight, so that I can get all that underway and get moving on, other than that, that's it for the moment, if there's any questions, I'll try and answer them.
Anything for Michael? Anything out there? Thank you, Michael, I do have a few contracts. Gary?
Good evening, everybody, I don't have any notes, so I'll just have to go off my blind roots, I'm not blind anymore, out of the Bible, as you can tell, I'm ready for a new application. I don't have the statistics and data from two thousand and twenty-three, because we're still awaiting a couple of toxicologies and two autopsy reports, so until I get that, I won't be able to define exactly what all happened for our county this last year. For this year, it's been quite busy already, we've had five families that we've served, two of those were within probably eight-hour time period, and, and many of you probably heard that among those treasured citizens lost is one from Akron, who, they're having his visitation tonight, he was kind of iconic and known all over the county, so it was especially sad, because his father just passed away about a week and a half before, so it's a tough time for that family, and if you could keep everybody in your prayers, you know, for that, so I wanted to let you know that. Also, last week I attended a two-day workshop in Carmel, and it was quite interesting, it was about some unique situations that sometimes you encounter, it's not usual-type scenarios, but it was enlightening, and I appreciated that. I've got a corners training board meeting coming up on February ninth, I plan to attend that, because it's a big meeting on finalizing our conferences for the summer in June, so we're looking forward to that, we're going to have, hopefully, the best ever that we've had, last year it just kind of keeps standing crescendo, and we had over three hundred people there, so, we are the second biggest in the United States behind Colorado, so, anyway, I'm proud of that, and how our Indiana corners and deputies work together, and we have great teams, let me see, there's also another workshop coming up toward the end of February, it's on mass fatality awareness for rural communities, so it kind of runs hand-in-hand with what we're doing with LEPC this year, we are going to have an in-person type event, the last two years you'll probably recall hearing the term tabletop, so we meet in a nice place that we all get together, collaborate and talk, and this will be something of action, where we'll be at a scene, working, collaborating, and reenacting something that might happen. So that's kind of mainly all I have for today, to just get you updated on what's going on, but do you have any questions?
Anything for Gary?
No.
Good, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Gary?
Yes, sir.
Do you want to show her exactly what you do?
Evening. Evening. Pretty good speed, what guys been doing, of course, they've been running the brush cutter, they keep running that, they're over in the northwestern part of the county with that, that's been doing very well, they've made a lot of progress with that, we get a lot of compliments on that, it's working well. Cutting trees with RMC, they've taken a break with them for the last two weeks, RMC went and were, started working with Black Bay County, they're coming back to work with us Monday, starting Monday, so they cut trees, we're in the weather committee. Other than that, they've been patching all the sand and changing culverts, so far enough on wood, we haven't had a lot of winter to deal with, which has been nice, so hopefully that continues. Main things I wanted to talk to you tonight about were grants, community crossings, so NDOT's got the first call for community crossings out right now, they raised it from a million dollars that they've been doing since two thousand and sixteen, to a million and a half this fall, they've got some extra money they're going to hand out, so we're going to try to go out for a million and a half, so, right now, what has got listed, we're going to try, every call, we go around the county, we can find, pay, and spread the money around the county, so this time we're going over northwest, we've put in for four hundred north from State Road Seventeen, twelve hundred west, six hundred north from State Road Seventeen to twelve hundred west, what's called Old Seventeen from nine hundred west, or I'm sorry, nine hundred west, which is Old Seventeen, from the Olson Road to State Road One Ten, and eleven hundred, or eleven seventy-five west from seven seventy, from seventy-five north to twelve hundred west, which is Main Street through Rich Lake, seventy-five north from eleven hundred west to twelve hundred west, and then we've got Blackadder Drive up here in town, which we're going to pay that, apply for, try and get paid, finish out the industrial park there, and then, so they'll give a little extra money to apply for, we're going to try a couple of big multi-plates, one of these on three seventy-five west, between three fifty south and two hundred south, and that's a big eight-foot multiplate, it's two hundred and twenty-five foot long, it runs right down the center of the road part of the way, so, it's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollar culvert to replace, so we're going to try to put that to, it's a multiplate, it's such a big culvert, it comes in big eight-foot sections of pipe that have them pulled together, so it'll take a couple of days, it'll probably take a week for us to put that, all that pipe... So it'll take a couple of days. It'll probably take a week for us to put that, all that pipe together by hand and then set it in with a crane.
Okay. Set it on a crane.
Yeah. We put them together. They're very expensive. And then we got another one down by South Mud Lake on 250 east between 675 south and 200 east. It's only seven, two, which is long. Again, it's big and very expensive to do. And then we've got Bio Restore, which is the, it's an asphalt rejuvenator that we put on all roads and restore pavement that we've been doing on these community crossings. We'll go back and put it on the ones we just did this March year. So those are the projects that we're trying to do for community crossings this year. So it comes to a million and a half, actually $2 million of work because we're about to have a million match money. If we get it all accepted.
And we have the match money?
So yeah, we would use Wheel Tax, Surtax money like we've done and Kim Drake money. So unless you guys want to come up with some money somewhere else, I'd be happy to use it.
You're doing a fine job.
Federal aid projects. We've got Bridge 161, which we're going to be letting this fall. We've been doing some work on the right ability to have. We've got a few issues we're trying to hammer out there. I think it's around October, we're going to go out for bids on that project fall though as well. And that one's down by Grass Creek, it's over the Grass Creek. We've got Old 31 South, which on the 18th of this month, we'll go out for bids on that. And that's from the city limits down to Nyom Lake. That's a repaving project for it. So hopefully, we get that bid bids on that. And then on the 23rd, I do a presentation. We put in a fall call for federal aid for Old 31 North and River Bridge up to 110. So we're trying to capture that grant. And that'd be five years from now if we get it. So that would be an expensive one if we get it. And then Bridge 33, that one's about four years out, four and a half years out. Up there at Tama, it's the Bridge River, typical hill. That one we've got going on. Of course, we've got bridge inspections continuously. The last thing I had tonight, last night I presented to the commissioners, was a task order from USI for the ADA Title VI updates. Came to them back in December. Our, the NDOT, they want us to update. They've gone around to all the counties and they're asking us to update all the transition plans, and ours is totally different than anybody else's in the state. So commissioners had to go to USI and ask them to help us with the updating. USI gave us a task order for updating. We've got all the information. We've got 120 days to get this, to get our ADA Title VI all in compliance. It puts in the early April. So they give us that task order. I think Phil asked some tough questions last night, you know, what all is involved in getting that prepared and everything. I saved that information earlier today.
And thank you. That was most helpful. And didn't Jody tell us that fulfilling this by the timeframe of mid-April is dependent upon NDOT awarding?
Yes.
So it's a big deal?
Yes. All of our federal grants and everything.
So we have to comply timely?
Yes.
Is that right?
They depend on us having, being compliant with ADA Title VI.
Right. So in that regard, whatever the cost is, the $26,317 for them to do it is nothing.
And I believe it was, Rick, you was superintendent back when you done it the first time back?
2012. Jody said last night.
And I think they've probably done it the first time.
I believe so.
Well, they've done it for Jody.
DLZ. And it was a lot bigger deal then. They're just refreshing it now.
Well, still, this is going to require, require 116 hours to get all this completed for Title VI and ADA. So it's not a small project.
Yeah, still, after Heather and I went around and collected all the information from all the county buildings and such. We saved you that much money.
Oh, okay. Okay.
I don't know how much that helped, but it's.
Do you need our approval?
So tell Jody I said thank you.
Well, what I need from you is commissioners approve depending your funding.
How are we going to pay for it?
How are we going to pay for it? Ideas?
I'm going to say.
I've got an idea.
You do? I do too.
Okay.
Go first.
Nope.
You?
Ladies first.
I say rainy day.
I don't have a issue with that.
I say rainy day.
There's a little over $9,000 in there.
Yes, there is. And I hate saying community crossings because we have fit for those commissioners want to put their hands in the O Street fund. Yeah.
So I'll entertain a motion. Do we approve the funding for the ADA assessment out of Rainy Day Fund? Do I have a motion?
Is that the 26,316?
Pardon me?
Is that the 26,316?
Yes, that's total cost.
I make motion again.
Do we make a motion second? Pete second. All in favor? There you go, sir.
Did I hear Phil say something about wanting to pay for the crossing though, which is Rainy Day?
No, no.
You have a terminology wrong.
I misspoke.
You're wrong.
You gave me the wrong word.
Never, never. That's all I had unless you had anything else. That is it?
That's it?
All right.
Thank you. Kathy?
No, sir.
All right, then we shall move on. I think I got everybody, didn't I? Okay. Next is the Job Classification Committee update. They met this afternoon, and Phil will lead it.
I will? So Pete or Lori, do you want to, do you want to take this one?
You're being fine.
So the county assessor asked the Job Classification Committee to review her request of increasing the supplemental pay for the Level III Assessor Appraiser that she has working in her office from $1,000 a year to $1,500 a year. She, Casey did put that in her budget, but she, it's not on the salary ordinance. So when we were, when we, the council, were reviewing salary ordinances and budgets, we just overlooked the supplemental for the Level III certification and didn't increase it from $1,000 annually to $1,500 annually. So we met, we discussed it, and we are in agreement to approve Casey's request to increase that supplemental pay from $1,000 a year to $1,500 a year. And we're making this recommendation to the entire council.
This is supplemental for?
The lady in her office has attained her level, and this requires lots of education and classes, her Level III Assessor Appraiser certification. And she's also the same lady that goes out in the field and Data Flex all permits for new construction.
Motion approved.
Do we have a motion to approve supplemental increase?
I'll second.
Chase seconded? Steve first, and Chase seconded? All approved? Seven zero.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along. We have here, first thing is the Agreement for the Economic Development Service. And this is our agreement. It's effective the first day of January 2024 between Fulton County, Indiana and the Fulton County Economic Development Corporation. Fulton County desires to maintain a viable and respected economic development presence that conducts programs and activity for future economic development and growth in accordance with county needs and long-term goals. The Fulton County Development Corporation agrees to provide certain standard, commonly accepted economic development services and services which result in a design, implosion, implosion, yeah, that word, of long-term projects relating to economic workforce and commercial, industrial or related business development in Fulton County. Therefore, as agreed by Fulton County, Indiana and the Fulton County Economic Development Corporation, is a long list of duties, everything else that I'm not going to read. If you want it, you're welcome to look at it. Again, the agreement to be effective from the first day of January to the 31st day of December 2024. The county agrees to pay the Fulton County Economic Development Corporation a fixed sum of $130,000 toward the corporation's budget. Payments for 12 equal installments of $10,833.34. It also includes our portion of the North Central Economic Regional Planning Commission as well as membership of Central Indiana Economic Development Partnership. Do I have a motion to approve this agreement?
I'll move to approve.
Phil moved to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Randy seconded. All in favor? Three, two, seven, zero. I've got some stuff we need to sign. Okay, next, the ordinance. And again, it's 20 some pages long, so I'll just read the first part of it. This is the first reading. Is that correct?
Yes.
This is the first reading of an ordinance. Ordinance 01172024. An ordinance amending county of Fulton's salary schedule and compensation policies for 2024. Whereas the county of Fulton, Indiana is an equal opportunity employer, whereas the intent of Fulton County to comply with applicable federal and state Indiana funding laws and regulations. Whereas Indiana Code 36-2-5-3, Section 3, Subsection 8, establishes that the county fiscal body shall fix compensation of officers, duties and other employees whose compensation is payable from the county general fund, county highway fund, county health fund, park and recreation fund, aviation fund, and any other fund in which the county order issued warrants for compensations. This includes the power to fix a number of officers, deputies and other employees describing classified positions and services, adopt schedules of compensation, and hire or contract with persons to assist in the development of compensation. I will ask for a motion to approve the first reading of the county salary ordinance.
So move.
Phil moved?
I'll second.
Lori seconded. All in favor? Seven zero. And we will have a second reading and have a motion out of second, third reading by title only. Steve made a motion. Pete seconded. Ordinance 01172024. An ordinance amending county of Fulton, Indiana's salary schedule and compensation policies for 2024. I will request a motion to approve the second, third reading by title.
So move.
Phil, Lori seconded. All in favor? Pass seven zero. I'll have a signature.
Should we have a signature page? It should be. What's my cabinet group?
Okay, thank you. Done this 17th day.
Can I make a comment about this?
Please do. You're welcome to.
I'm going to. So this salary ordinance amendment is as a result of the Job Classification Committee increasing the supplemental pay for the Level III Assessor Appraiser from $1,000 to $1,500. So that's reflected on this. That's why. Oh, I'm sorry. That's why we're doing this.
Appreciate that.
It's all right. The warning signatures.
And next up, we have minutes. First minutes, hopefully you've had a chance to look them over. First minutes are from our regular meeting Tuesday, December 12, 2023. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as written?
I'll second move.
Randy moved. Do I have a second? Pete can't because he wasn't here.
Oh, I'll second.
All right. Randy's first. Phil seconded. All in favor? Six zero. Thank you.
Signing and passing.
Yes, I am. Next is ours. Organizational meeting on Wednesday, January 3. I have one correction on this. Is the Plan Commission, is that the right one, Lori?
Yes, it is.
The Plan Commission, Lori, but then Chase got a hold of me and requested that he be reappointed to that. So instead of Lori, it is Chase.
The guests suggested we do a motion to change them rather than correct the minutes because the minutes as presented were not incorrect.
We can do that, however, whatever we need to do.
I mean, the way the minutes are presented is not going to happen. But if you want to change, it's because we do a motion to make the change. We need to go ahead.
All right, then we need to have a motion to correct the minutes.
I make a motion to replace Chase with me on the hearing Plan Commission appointment. Due to his.
Lori made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Steve seconded. All in favor? Thank you, Chase. Thank you, Lori. Okay, so now, do we have to approve the minutes?
I think, yeah, go ahead and correct the minutes.
Okay, all right. So we'll do this again. I need to have a motion to approve the minutes as corrected.
So move.
Phil and Steve seconded. All in favor? Pete, five zero. I only found her in clothes.
Are you having fun?
Okay, let's see. We have no transfers. There are no additional appropriations. Do we have any old business? Start again. Pete?
No, sir.
Randy?
No, sir.
Chase?
No.
Lori? Steve?
No.
Phil?
I do not.
I do not. Christina? Anyone else with old business? And we'll move on to new business.
Negative.
Ready?
No.
Chase?
No.
Lori?
No, sir.
Steve?
Happy birthday to Phil about a week late. She turned forty-six last week.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Hopefully you got that on TV. Thank you.
Phil, new business?
Just thank Christina for sending out the two thousand twenty-four budgets to all of us. And also, I put a two thousand twenty plat book on everybody's, gave to all the council members, and that was from Megamod. They had some extras, so she left them in our council mailbox for everyone to have. So I wanna thank them for that. That's all.
My, I would like to thank Josh and Devin. Someone tried to hack into our email accounts and they were on top of it and they got stopped. And so I wanna thank them for their due diligence and their hard work of getting that mitigated so it didn't affect anyone. And they're working, I guess, according to Josh, it was, I wanna say ten to fifteen counties. Got hit all of it at once.
Really?
And, uh.
Wow.
So that's why we spend all these big dollars on computers and virus protection and all this firewall and stuff. I wanna thank Josh and Devin for their hard work on stopping that. And that's all I have. Christina? Anyone else with new business?
I'll just make a comment. We did sign the insurance last night for casualty and liability. It went up, what, roughly seventy thousand each?
About seventy-five thousand.
About seventy-five thousand. So big hit. Deductibles went through the roof. There's some deductibles. Yours, ten thousand, Travis, I think?
Mine's five.
Five. Highway's ten thousand.
Highway trucks are ten.
So it is. So did this, I know you guys was there, but the rest of the council probably didn't see that last night, so.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else with new business? Steve?
I got one more thing.
No, sir. Go ahead.
Uh, and the old assistant Joe Day's family, I just seen it was a bit where he died. I realize he passed. He's been on the nine-one-one committee for all their, since I've been here. The old assistant to his family.
Yes, absolutely. I've known him for forty-some odd years and worked with him in the fire department, through the hardware. Yes, we lost a good one there. And unfortunately, like Jerry said, his father passed away two weeks before and the days were very instrumental in Akron and Henry Township, though on Fulton County. So yes, they will be missed.
Will we do a last call for him tomorrow?
Good, good. That's, the wife could buy the funeral home this afternoon and you'd have to give her a reservation to get a place to park, so.
Yeah.
So anyway, if there are any new business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Pete, Steve second it. All in favor? Thank you very much.